Hey guys, how's it going? I'm Douglas Soule, who will be moderating this forum. I'm the editor-in-chief of the DA, which is WVU's independent student news source. I have been the EIC this past year and will continue being the editor-in-chief for the upcoming year, which means whoever wins this election, I imagine, I'll be in frequent communication with. And that election will be held on April 30th, with early voting from April 17th to April 27th. So I kind of wanted to discuss the format of this forum. First and foremost, each candidate is going to be given 30 seconds to make opening remarks. Following that, I will be asking six questions, which were written by Mountaineers for Progress and the League of Women Voters. For those who have opposition, you will be given a minute to answer the question. For those who are running unopposed, you will be given 30 seconds. Audience members, you're welcome to make your own questions. There's cards and a pen. I thought they were right there. She has them over there. So if you would like to ask a question to the candidates, get a card. And after a three-minute break following the answering of those six questions, we will be asking the audience-written questions. Audience members, you're welcome to go to the restroom, get a snack at any time throughout the forum. While this is a contested election in some areas, it is a nonpartisan election, and a League of Women Voters, for example, is a nonpartisan. So I guess let's begin, starting at the very end, if you'd like to give your 30-second opening remarks.
Do we all need a mic?
Yes, you do.
I'll do 15 seconds with the yellow. Thank you very much. I'll also red.
Since it's only 30 seconds... There's my palm there. I'm Ron Dane, I'm from First Ward. Born and raised here, and I grew up on Hess Street, and I actually live up on Globe now, but been here all my life. Interested in serving again, and I don't have much else other than I was on council for 16 years, and hope to serve again. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Rachel Fettie, also from First Ward. My family and I have been here since 2007, and we have been committed since we arrived to making the most of what Morgantown has to offer, which is a lot, and most fundamentally it's people. I have been a part of many different organizations, and up to the point where I decided to run for city council, my concern was that although we focused on many economic issues, that sometimes our families and the needs of our children are being left out. So those issues that are relevant to them are very important to me.
Yes, I'm Bill Kurecki. I am current mayor of Morgantown. I'm the Second Ward representative. You've heard me say this in the past. I came here for a year, and that was 48 years ago. So I'm an old hand at Morgantown. I've found a lot of things here that I really love, and really like, and really grateful for, and I want to continue serving for that reason. So I'm running again, and I hope you'll vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Barbara Parsons, I'm from Second Ward. I've been in Morgantown for approximately 50 years. I've raised my daughters here. I live on Park Street in an old home that's a little older than I am. It's 116 years old. So I love the neighborhood, I love the city. When I came here from Frozen Camp, West Virginia, this was the most exciting place I'd ever been. Now, you could understand that if you were from Frozen Camp. But in any event, I stayed, and I love it, and I've served on a number of committees and organizations in the city, and I'd just like an opportunity to continue to do that at the level of the city council.
Hi, my name is Zachary Cruz. I'm running as a write-in candidate for Third Ward as Ryan Wallace is moving out of the country. While his name will still be on the ballot, he's actually decided not to serve another term. I have a master's degree in anthropology and historic preservation, and I'm a registered professional archaeologist and historic preservationist. Now, when most people think of an archaeologist, they think of Indiana Jones, but I've actually worked in my career throughout federal agencies and private sector, working with tribal nations and municipal and city governments, and finding ways to allow for economic development while still protecting our historic resources. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight.
Good evening. My name is Richard Dumas, and I'm also a write-in candidate for Third Ward. I am pleased to be here tonight, and I want to thank our sponsors for getting us all together this evening. For 25 years, I've been an active in the preservation of Morgantown's neighborhoods with a history of attendance in the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the city council. As the Neighborhood Association president, I've also been active in coordinating the neighbors to get together in order to preserve our neighborhoods. I appreciate your vote on April 30th. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me here. My name is Todd Steenbrook. I'm a write-in for the Seventh Ward. Married to a wonderful woman, Amy, two children, 17 years old and four, big gap. But I've been in the business world here in Morgantown for 27 years, received quite a few financial awards, and would like to kind of transfer that to the city council. So hopefully everything works out, and I get your vote on the 30th. Appreciate it.
So hi, I'm Barry Wendell. I'm the incumbent candidate in the Seventh Ward. This will be my second term, I hope. I live in Suncrest with my husband, Rabbi Joe Hampel, and our cat, Tappus Caton. I've been on the council, I teach at Ali also, and I teach rock and roll history, so my class now is the great hits of 1966. We had "These Boots Are Made for Walking" by Nancy Sinatra today. And what else? I like to travel, and I would like to have another chance to be on city council. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Dave Harshbarger, running for Sixth Ward. My passion is wellness. I've been a wellness professional for many years, and when I work with people, organizations, our community, my focus is on decision-making that looks at, are we making things safer? Is our community healthier? And can we improve people's well-being? And so if elected to council, I would like to take that kind of perspective to decisions impacting policy in our community to help improve our quality of life.
Hello, I'm Jenny Celine. I'm running for my, I have to look down, Seventh Term. I have three kids, they are all grown up, they're in their twenties, and they all graduated from Morgantown High School. I now have a four-year-old grandson, which means I get to make the rounds of all of the egg hunts there this weekend, which are at least three and maybe four, but I think we're only going to make it to two because no child should be forced to go to more than two egg hunts in a weekend. And one of them will be out at the Botanic Garden, where I happen to be on the board there, and they're having an egg hunt that's educational. And I'm sitting back down again, anyway, Fourth Ward, and I would really appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ron Delaney. I represent the Fifth Ward. And I first came to Morgantown in 2006, when I met my wonderful wife, Kelly Bailey, who's here. We met on match.com. And I first came to Morgantown, and we had dinner at Mercury downtown on High Street, and I stayed at the Clarion Hotel. And on the way out of town the next morning, I stopped at Slight Indulgence, which was down on High Street, and picked up a gift basket for my mom to carry to South Carolina. During that first visit, I fell in love with my wife, and I also really fell in love with the charm of Morgantown, especially the downtown and the traditional neighborhoods. So as an architect, I'm serving on council, and I'm running again in order to try to fulfill the potential that I see in our downtown and traditional neighborhoods.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, every candidate except Deputy Mayor Celine and Councilman Ron Delaney are given a minute. They are running unopposed, so they get the 30 seconds to answer. So the first question is, recent changes to West Virginia's tax policy have spurred discussions of a potential 1% city sales tax. Would you be in support of this tax? If so, would you consider reducing the BNO tax and/or the city's user fee? I'll start with Councilwoman Fettie.
I think that over time, one of the things that I've become convinced of is that we need to take those additional steps to plan for the future and deal with the problems that we have, rather than passing those problems on to the future. Over time, I've become convinced that a 1% sales tax is necessary, based on the reports from our financial office and also from the reports that I've heard from our boards and commissions, and of course, from our departments that require additional funds. At this point, we've considered putting in a 1% sales tax. However, that tax, however it is divided, will not be divided among the departments that we have, simply as a general fund. Right now, it's anticipated that those funds would be divided among a few different areas, but primarily Bow Park, where we have severe capital improvement needs, and also our pensions, where we have some shortfalls. So I do think that a 1% sales tax will be necessary, and I will support it because I think it needs to be done, and I don't want to pass these costs on to our children.
Do I pass it right?
Okay, pass it to the left.
To the left. So it's my turn. Do I give you the short answer? Am I in favor? Yes, I am. That's the short answer. The difficulty here is that we have very limited capabilities in terms of how we can raise money. And this is not something that we came to early or easily. We knew about this initially when we went after Home Rule way back when. We looked at it and came to it slowly. We've seen what's happened and the benefit that's occurred in the other cities that have applied it. Looked at Bridgeport and what they've done with their recreational activities or facilities because of the 1% sales tax. You look at Klecksburg and see what they've done with it in terms of how they were able to do the new theater that they have. Actually, we've talked to other merchants and what have you, and we find that this is not a determining factor as to where you shop. This will not be a detriment to them, and it has the potential for benefit, I think, within our communities that's well worth looking at. The specifics, will we negotiate? Will we have to, will we reduce the BNO tax? Yes, that's part of it. That's just mandated. But yes, we will take into consideration how to make this less burdensome and most effective. Thank you.
Okay, 1% sales tax, very quickly. I can't say I'm in favor of it until I look at all of the numbers and all of the budget and what the priorities are, and go through a process of setting those priorities. I think many times, if you can trade off, or you can cut costs in one area, you can share costs in the other area, and until I see what is what, I can't say I'm in favor of sales tax. That's not to say I wouldn't be, but I would like to see first that the money we have is being used in the most effective way to address the priorities that the city has.
I am in favor of a 1% sales tax, provided it's not applied to food or items that were recently relieved from the pink tax, such as feminine hygiene products and diapers. I believe that half of that is slated to go to Bow Park. The 2020-2021 estimated budget has that 1% sales tax at $5 million. If 2.5% of that went to Bow Park, I believe we could do amazing improvements to our facilities. Investment in our citizens and childrens will create a more prosperous future for Morgantown, and I think the way to do that is through funding our community recreation opportunities and green space. Marion County recently implemented a countywide 1% tax dedicated 100% to parks and recreations, and has made widespread improvements across the board to their facilities.
Thank you. From my reading, I would definitely be in favor of the 1% sales tax, provided that there was some consideration to looking at the user fee. I find the user fee to be an extremely regressive tax, hitting the lowest of income individuals the hardest. As far as the BNO tax goes, part of the process of getting the sales tax approved requires that the city reduce BNO taxes. So that we don't get in a situation like Parkersburg did, we would have to be judicious in what BNO taxes we look at reducing, and how much we reduce them, because once you bring them down, it's a challenge with the state to bring them back up again. As far as reducing the user fee, according to my calculations, the user fee brings in probably about $2 million a year. So you could use 30% of that sales tax approximately to replace what is being funded currently by the user fee. Thank you. I kind of look at things a little bit differently. I'd like to know how we got here. Why is it that a 1% increase on taxes is even a conversation? Was it a misappropriation of funds? Do we not have businesses? Do you not hear?
Hold it close here.
Okay. Hopefully you've heard what I've said already. We need to figure out how to bring businesses into the city to where we can create some funds without picking on the residents. And that's how I feel about it. I am a resident. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a business owner. I'd love to see the BNO tax go down, as a business owner, but you can't do that on the backs of the public. It doesn't make any sense to me. Find out how we got here. I think that's the most crucial thing, and crunch the numbers in a more positive way. Thank you.
The city needs to have a source of revenue, a lot more revenue to fix the parks, to do the things that we need to do to fund the pensions and do everything else. I'm not really in favor of raising the sales tax. It seems regressive, and that it will hurt poor people more than wealthy people. As to the BNO tax, I'm okay with it where it is. I could probably be convinced, if enough people on the council give me a good reason to raise the sales tax, I might go for it, but right now, I would say no, although we need to have as much revenue as possible to do the things we want to do. We don't want to be like the county where there's no parks, there's no contribution to the library or the bus system. We need to make those contributions. So we do need a source of income, but I think we need to find something less regressive than a sales tax.
My understanding with the budget and the need for the revenue is that we have very limited ways as a city to raise revenue, and this is one of the vehicles to be able to do that. And I would support a 1% sales tax if it was clearly communicated what it was going to be for, not general funds, but it was going to Bow Park, to sidewalks, to roads, whatever that might be, but if it was clearly spelled out. And I think, you know, when I think of the city of Morgantown and our population being approximately the same as it was 50 years ago, the resources needed are because of the county's growth. And so the 1% sales tax would be a way to perhaps more equitably capture revenue from beyond just the citizens of Morgantown.
People see other cities in the state of West Virginia, and they see what they've used their 1% sales tax for, and so they say, other cities have the sales tax, other cities have taken care of their unfunded pensions, other cities have taken care of their parks and districts. Why not here? And that's what I have been wondering for a little while. So this is the time to move forward on the sales tax. This is something that is a long time coming. We would have to reduce the BNO. Some suggestions have been retail BNO, because it would be affected by the sales tax and manufacturing, so.
Yes, I would support the 1% sales tax. We have a lot of deferred maintenance and deferred infrastructure needs in our city that need to be taken care of. I do agree that it should be designated for a particular purpose. Regarding the municipal fee, I also find that to be very regressive. I think I would like to see, over the long term, us remove that municipal fee. However, at the current time, we're paying salaries out of that, and so I don't think we're ever going to be able to remove that, where we're spending a considerable chunk of that on police salaries. So for me, the sales tax would provide an opportunity to maybe offset, pull the way that we're funding some of those salaries away from the municipal fee, so at some point in the future, we might be able to reduce that.
What's a forum without awkward mic problems? Here you go, Ron.
I guess mine's a little different. I would have preferred us to work with the county on this, because if we would have had a 1% tax for the whole county, then you wouldn't have this issue of someone might shove somewhere else, and everybody would have benefited from it. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is that this 1% needs to be focused on something. We have Bridgeport, as the mayor said, they're building a $55 million facility that's going to spur economic development. We have to use this money smart, in a smart way, so that we can increase our BNO tax. That's our light right here. If we can use this 1% to spur business, spur development, then we can actually make that money, just like Granville is, just like Westover is, and that's a key thing. There's also some legislation out there that I'm investigating, that we may have to lean on this 1% in the near future because of a bill that was passed, and we'll see how that goes. Thanks.
Thank you. Morgantown's cost of living ranks above the national average. This makes it difficult for some of our city's most vulnerable residents, including seniors and low-income families, to find housing. What would you propose to ensure that high-quality, affordable housing is available within the city?
Well, that is a problem. We are working on it. Our housing stock is more expensive than other locations. However, there's more of that stock now coming to market as the university has stepped in and taken over some of the student population. So there's more available within the city than there ever has been in the past. I serve, actually with Rachel here on the Housing Advisory Commission. Thank you. I have too many of these that I'm trying to keep track of. That's one of our concerns, it's one of the things we're looking into. One of the things that we're concerned about is fair housing. It is in our strategic plan that we hope to do a housing inventory and survey, so that we have a better attitude, so that we know what's out there, what housing stock's out there, and how we might go about making that more available. We are working with various organizations, and I have to say to you also, in terms of what we've done as a city, we've increased the minimum wage to $15 an hour. And if some of the other employers in the area were to follow our example, we'd have less of a problem. Thank you.
Affordable housing is an issue. It's an issue not just in Morgantown or in Mon County, but it's an issue all over the state and all over the nation. The two areas, the two groups of people the most affected by the lack of affordable housing are young professionals or young people who are just beginning a career or a working situation, and the others are the retirees. And one of the things that some cities have worked toward in order to build up the center of their city, which is very similar to what's happened to us, that businesses move out of the city, is to provide and to build, or to oversee, or to welcome, to recruit people who do build affordable housing, and those housing units are above the street level with retail and restaurants and other kinds of services available at the lower levels. And so they can make it available in town, it's walkable, you have access to the services you need, and it's very easy for people who need low-income housing to live there.
So on affordable housing, while WVU is a large economic force in our city, it comes with a large transient student population. I value higher education, but I don't feel that providing housing for the large student population should come at the expense of providing housing to the rest of the city or at the expense of our historic neighborhoods. I feel like there's avenues for conversations between WVU and the city to address additional student housing, and I would also be interested in exploring avenues for pathways to help current low-income renters transition into homeownership.
Housing is definitely an issue in Morgantown with affordability. Morgantown is, I think, one of the few cities in the state where it is more costly to rent a home than it is to buy a home. There are several programs available through the state for first-time home buyers, which enable people to purchase homes in Morgantown at a relatively reasonable monthly rate. One of the things I would like to see as the president of the Wilds Hill Island Park Neighborhood Association is that a lot of these houses that are currently divided into multi-unit rental properties, as they move off the market, have those converted back to single-family homes. The Fairmont Morgantown Housing Authority does an excellent job at rehabbing and building homes that are affordable for the average resident and citizen in Morgantown. I agree with the rehab. I think that's a great thing. If you're moving students into more affordable housing with WVU, then those homes are going to be available. I think another thing, that the $15 an hour kind of is one approach, but employment in general would be great. We don't have a lot of that within the city. I deal with people on a daily basis. I have a lot of people that come in that are making $800 a month on social security, because they make more there than they can getting a job. And it's not a positive thing. We have to get the businesses in here that are going to be worth going to work for. And fortunately, there's not a lot of that here. I mean, we're seeing the repercussions of what's going on with Mylan, and it's going to get worse if we don't do something about it. Get some businesses in here, get some people employed to where they can afford a home. Those homes will be available. So, thank you.
I see a lot of issues here. I know that there's two classes of people that I know personally that have trouble finding housing. People who are older, who want to move out of their giant houses in Suncrest or South Park, and would love to live in a nice apartment building. There's the one on the river, and that's sort of it. And people just starting out after college, who want to stay here after college, but all the apartments are for students. Someone said we could, if we could, I think the university needs to be more responsible for its own students for housing, and then we could free up some of the other apartments on the outer edges of the city or in places that we might annex at some point. I live in a very modest house, but Joe and I were able to buy that because I had inherited money. Otherwise, we never would have had a down payment for the house. So that's a problem for people, student loans and not being able to save cash for a down payment. What I think that we could do is, if we could work with some of the real estate people to, there's empty lots all around town, if we could zone them for, particularly for moderate or low-income housing, have people build there, we could do that. Thanks.
So this is an area that I would like to learn more about, to be honest, and I'd like to work with those people who are more directly involved to better understand the situation, assess the level of need, and what are our options. So that would be my approach, and I support the livable wage. I think that is another tool that could be helpful that I'd like to see WVU implement.
So we recently put together a land reuse agency, which is one of the nice items that passed during this past session. This land reuse agency is working on green space, making green space available, making housing available, and making commercial properties available. The idea is that because we are relatively landlocked, we would like to, whenever there's land available, make sure that it gets back into use, and that includes housing. And here, we do have problems with the working poor. We also have problems with people throughout the spectrum of their working life being able to afford housing. The Chamber of Commerce put together, this is 30 seconds, I'm not sure, anyway, the Chamber of Commerce put together a really nice study that showed that in our area compared to other Big 12 communities, we, in Morgantown, had lower incomes and higher housing costs. So that's something to keep working on.
So yeah, it is a big issue. I think it's been summarized and framed fairly well. I would like to see us, we have passed ordinances that allow us, give us more room to act on dilapidated and abandoned homes. I think that those sites can be redeveloped as affordable housing, and also can reinforce the fabric of our traditional neighborhoods. An assessment, we have actually budgeted in this next fiscal year for a housing assessment study. study. And there are a number of policies that we can implement that would incentivize the inclusion of affordable housing in larger developments, and they include things like inclusionary zoning. I know this is tricky in Morgantown, but the idea of in-law cottages or suites, these are strategies that are being used in other places that I think that we should give some serious considerations here for Morgantown.
Again, it's a, it's a problem that's really market-driven, so I, I would want to learn more about it myself, because my time on council, there were other people that were doing housing and, and working with that. I know that Barbara's daughters in your business, you rehabbed houses and, but I don't, I don't know enough about it, and I would, you know, love to learn more about it.
Housing is such a critical challenge in Morgantown that we've made it one of our strategic goals to address. It is one of those critical points where we, we set a chain of difficulty in motion when we do not have affordable housing, and then we try to recruit qualified employees who cannot find affordable, accessible, attainable housing. They reject our positions here and choose other places. We have talented people who do not come here specifically because of the housing issue. I've been working on this issue for a while with the mayor, the Housing Advisory Commission. Part of the, what we've tried to do is to address some of that market need that is simply a result of an overestimation of the number of students that would need housing, some building on the part of WVU that has resulted in additional student opportunities for housing, and an ever-growing need on the part of the working poor, the working middle-class families, and folks who actually need and can utilize some of these larger neighborhood homes and other areas where housing is, is more appropriate for families and young children. And we've created a housing fair to try to match those two groups up, because we understand that it's a detriment to the landlords, and it's also a challenge to our community that we need to rise up and meet. Through the Housing Advisory Commission, we work with a number of groups that really are serving our community and are often overlooked when we discuss this question, including the Community Housing Action Partnership, Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority, and other groups who are working on this issue day by day. One of my big concerns is I, I work also with Habitat for Humanity, and they're not able to build here because they can't find affordable property in Morgantown. And we simply need to be able to work towards giving those organizations that are serving us so well a chance to do what they can do and what they're best at.
So just a reminder, can the person collecting the cards with the questions on it raise? Okay, so over there, if you have any questions for the city council candidates, please hand them to her. And also a reminder to the candidates that when that red card, card comes up, please wrap it up, just so we can get through all the questions and leave time for everyone to answer them. So the next question is, would you support consolidation of government procurement services such as Oak Rock Salt between the major towns in Mon County in order to increase governmental efficiency?
First of all, I believe in sharing services if you can, not duplicating effort, finding places where that can be done. And I think in the past, we did manage to share some costs with Westover when it came to Rock Salt. And we do now. Is that correct? So I think there are lots of opportunities. I think money will drive this issue, whether we decide to do it or whether the other cities around us decide to do it eventually. As we all run out of money, it's going to force us to get together and make these decisions. But I think we need to be proactive to do that so that we're spending our money efficiently and effectively, and that gives us money to spend in other areas that may have more priority.
So I will admit this isn't a topic that I really know much about. I, when it comes to the market, though, I'm, I'm generally in favor of more competition. I'm not a big fan of consolidation and the possible creation of monopolies. Like I said, this is one I don't really know a lot about. I would be interested in listening to the opinions of people who have more knowledge on it than I do, though.
This is actually a, an interesting question, and with my background in finance and my education in business, anytime that you can purchase with the economies of scale, you're going to save money. And having the ability to pool together the resources between the, the major municipalities in Mon County could only serve to reduce the overall cost for everybody. For me, I think that the more that we can work together with the, with the other municipalities, whether it be through the purchase of goods or through the providing of services, we can only enhance the service that we provide to our citizens and to the community as a whole. Well, I would have to say that I agree with a lot of what this gentleman had to say. We all drive through every aspect of Morgantown in the outskirts. We all like to get where it is we are going without the potholes, without slipping on ice or crashing and all that good thing. So anything that can be done to save money and help out our citizens is a positive.
I also agree that in terms of procuring things, if we could put out a contract for all the cities in the county all at once, we could get a lower price and do better, that would be great. I would not be in favor of anything that would hurt the, the independence of the city of Morgantown. But I think we could do something like this very easily with the other cities and save everyone money, which would be a good thing.
So my first question would be, why aren't we already doing this? It seems like a no-brainer. I work in a hospital system, and that's how we purchase everything for our eight hospitals, is through a shared service and a contract to negotiate the lowest price. And in turn, then we, if, if we were to do that, pass that savings on to our citizens.
So I'm in favor of working together with other governmental entities, whoever they may be, including the cities. We also could be working with the county. Purchasing Rock Salt, we have done that before. I'm not certain the status of that right at this very moment. It seems as though when Rock Salt, when the price is high and people coordinate, everyone benefits. I know we purchase our vehicles through a purchasing program that I think is national, and several other entities locally do the same thing, so that we can exercise some good purchasing to save money. Thanks.
Yes, collaboration is good and saving money's good.
Good, good first name, too. No, it, it's true. And I, I used to work at the hospital where Dave works now, and I, I ran the materials management department, and we had a thirty million dollar budget, and that's how we kept our costs down, was that we bought in huge bulk. And it's the same thing with municipalities. We should be doing a lot more. We should be buying paving again. We should be buying anything, if it's paper products, whatever it is, we can get better unit costs every day, and it would save us a lot of money. So, yes, I do agree with that.
I agree with the Rons.
These are hard acts to follow. We do, we do this now. We look for economies. We do, as Jenny had said, that we, we do purchase based on the best available price, and we, we do seek that out. So be comfortable in that we're already taking care of this. This is a no-brainer for us. We already do it.
How would you work to improve the downtown experience? How could you improve new business to downtown other than bars and restaurants?
So I'm actually really excited I got this question. I've been talking with downtown business owners, and there was a program I saw when I was in Sacramento called Calling All Dreamers. And what Sacramento does is the city sponsors a competition every year where they put up a free year's worth of rent at a downtown business. And then they partner people who want to be small business owners with downtown business owners to serve as their mentors. And during the course of this competition, the potential business owners turn in business models, they turn in advertising layouts, they turn in their stock, they turn in their anticipated finance. And what they find is, as the contest goes along, the people who are in the contest to get the rent and to get the, the help on the business end up forming their own business because they've had a mentor work with them to strategically develop them a small business plan. I would very much be in favor of out-of-the-box programs where we could partner with people who want to be small business owners downtown, with people who already are small business owners downtown, and provide them the avenue to go into business ownership for themselves.
That's an interesting question, because downtown Morgantown has its, has its ups and downs. In the past, you didn't have all the bars downtown. You had the bars in Sunnyside. Sunnyside has been, now been redeveloped, so the bars have kind of migrated to downtown. One of the things that I would like to see is for the downtown business owners through Main Street Morgantown to get together and collaborate in an incubator where new businesses can go in, in some of the empty storefronts, and have a year of, of experience to get their feet wet. The other thing that I would like to see is, is that the businesses look at the residents of Morgantown as well as the students. Quite often, you'll go downtown to, to a restaurant, and you'll find it's closed because the students are on break. During that time, residents still need to eat as well. So I think combining the residents with the students and having a comprehensive plan to develop incubators for businesses would be very helpful.
This, for me, is a tough question. I, I know that my family and I do not visit downtown Morgantown the way that maybe that we should. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of reason to. I think that needs to improve. The, the riverfront property is, is great, and I think it needs to be used a whole heck of a lot more for many things to bring families out. There's parking that's relatively close. Downtown, anything that goes on, especially a parade, you know how things are with parking. That is an issue. People don't want to travel down there and deal with that. So a little bit of work on infrastructure, focusing people on the downtown area more so. I don't hear a lot about come-visit downtown Morgantown. So I think it needs to be put out to the public. Hey, we've got several things going on. Social media is a great avenue, and it's used a lot, but maybe a little bit more with positive things that are going on, so.
I'm going to defend downtown, even though I live in Suncrest, three and a half miles away. I do like to go downtown, not just because I work at City Hall, but I like that there's a library there, there are government offices there, there's a post office. I like the restaurants there as opposed to everybody, place else. Joe and I eat at the Japanese restaurant, the Indian restaurant, the Middle Eastern restaurants. I love that there are not chain restaurants, that there are cool places to go. I shop at Retro Antique on Walnut Street all the time, and I really enjoy downtown. I think we could do better. I would like to see the movie theater rehabbed. Ed Hawkins said something to me. I said, I wanted to see a good coffee shop, art house, movie theater, and an independent bookstore downtown. I think I'm being real radical. And then Ed Hawkins said to me, well, we had that fifty years ago. And I thought, well, I can't tell if I'm a leftist radical or a rightist conservative anymore. So, but I, I like downtown. We did offer a tax break, which I don't think anyone took up, and I probably wouldn't renew. That's it.
When I think of a great downtown, I think of walkability and ability to be a pedestrian safely and move about in a safe environment that, that's clean. And, you know, our storefronts downtown are pretty dirty. So in, in inviting atmosphere, we have fewer trees per urban area than most places, so planting more green to encourage people to enjoy the outdoors downtown. And for small business owners, it would be nice if we could create a better tax incentive to encourage small businesses to stay and come to the area downtown.
How do we improve the downtown experience? I love downtowns, and I love our downtown. We've added benches this year, which was important through a grant. I'd like to see more benches. I'd like to see more benches that came in and out with, I think, Pinocchio's and the storefront, next to, next to Pinocchio's, they bring in and out a bench every night. I would like to see more, just the most welcoming atmosphere we can possibly have. But I also frequent the restaurants. I love the Met Theater. We have people that come to the Met Theater and just can't believe what a jewel we have. So some of this is kind of an attitude issue of just having more people coming down. There are some young entrepreneurs that have been doing something really neat, Saturday night art events regularly, so please come down to those. They were successfully even in the winter.
Thirty seconds is going to be tough on this. This has been really one of my passions and, and one of the places where I focus a lot of my energy. We have done some, I think, very important things to help spur economic development downtown. One, this council did pass a BNO tax credit, and I will admit that I voted no on that, not so much because I'm against the tax credit, but because there were, there was nothing in that ordinance to support existing businesses. And I've, and I felt like that five million dollar threshold was too high for your, for your independent business owner downtown. So I would like to see us extend those incentives, and we started to do that in some ways with the Funding of Facade Improvement Program downtown. We also applied through the governor's office to have three areas downtown designated as federal opportunity zones. And my understanding is that there is some interest being generated in some development in some of those areas. If I might just clarify one thing, Barry just mentioned that he's not sure whether the BNO tax incentive has contributed to any new businesses. It has. There is a seven million dollar project going on at the former Dairy Queen site, Sandwich U on High Street. And the city manager tells me that, that the consideration of that BNO tax credit did entice those developers to finalize that project.
Over the time that I was on council, we, we did all the sidewalks downtown with grants. I think Bill and Jenny were on, on council at the same time. Those sidewalks are already done, so that helped for a while to try to get some people downtown. But one of the things I'd like to see with the Warner Theater, I, I don't think we've done enough with our, the museum. I'd like to see the Warner Theater become our museum. I think it would be a nice front on that lower part of High Street, and would bring, we have to have amenities downtown. And the more things that we do downtown, the more people will come. So we just have to, it's a continuous project downtown. It will never just stop. We're not just going to, we just can't sit on it. We've got to continue to improve the downtown all the time.
So I am one of those folks who really loves the downtown, and I would just like to say that I think part of what we're dealing with is that sometimes we don't always feel like we're as close a community as we actually are. I had a friend who said that her husband was willing to open a bookstore downtown as soon as he could hear people laughing on High Street. And I, I've been waiting to hear that because I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick him with it. Because this is a great community, and we are so much closer than we seem to be. The high school is just two blocks away, and those kids come downtown, they come down for their practices, their rehearsals, they visit TK's, they get their bubble tea, they hang out, they have a lot of fun, they go to the library. The library has initiated a brand-new teen program, which has served kids, my kids' age, in an amazing way. And I, and there's actually several people in this audience who have participated or have been engaged by those programs. We need to commit to our community to have a thriving downtown. We need to choose something other than a chain. We need to choose to go meet the individuals and the storefront owners that are downtown that are so great and inspiring and serve not only as storefronts and businesses in our community, but also on our boards and our commissions. And I'd just like to note that Main Street Morgantown is working very hard on these issues. The CBB is working very hard to let folks know... The CBB is working very hard to let folks know about what we do and how we do it and how great it is to live here and how great it is to be downtown. And I hope that we can address those issues that still somehow deter people away, but I hope that, I hope that we'll commit to our community by shopping there more because it doesn't cost anymore to get a fantastic burger at Tailpipes than it does to wander over to one of those like, you know, dime a dozen chains. So, thank you.
Thank you. I love downtown. I really do. I've seen a change, but I've also, if you look around downtown, there's not that many empty storefronts, there really aren't. And if they're empty, they're empty probably for a reason because I know some people who are, have them in queue, waiting to do something, waiting to put things together. There are so many good things happening downtown. You heard Ron talk about the facade program that's going on, Dominic Claudio coming in. If you go down and look at his building, the old, what's the radio station building and next to it, the things he's done just in sprucing that up, it's great. The things that are happening on the upper end of High Street that are going on, that's encouraging too. The things that had the potential to happen down at the lower end of High Street, we just couldn't get it to work. We tried. The numbers just didn't work out. But we're working again with Arts Mon, we're working with the MAC, we're working with the Your Community Fund. There are things that are on the horizon that could happen to the MAC. If you go and you do an art walk downtown, you see the number of people down there, it's amazing. And if you go down on a weekend, you can hear a Dixieland band go up and down the street. It's wonderful. It's just a great place to be. You need to look at that, it's a jewel, it really is. And we just need to polish it a bit.
I don't know how much polish we have, but I think we're gonna need a little. I've been here 50 years and I've seen what Ed has seen, which is we did have bookstores and coffee shops and the new stand, which I love to go to on Sunday morning. And as malls came and downtown went, we have what we have today. And there are some things that are nice and there's a lot of work that's been done. I don't want to play it down, but what we lack is knowing what we want downtown to be. We have students that we need to serve and right now, most people who aren't in Morgantown look at downtown as bars and restaurants. And they don't go downtown because that's what there is. So we need to think as a city, what is it we want downtown to be? And how do we do that with college students and families? Because we need that component enhanced considerably. So we need a vision. And there are college towns that have done this with walking pedestrian areas downtown. They've got lovely stores, lovely coffee shops, those kinds of things. We need to ask ourselves first, working with the university, working with our communities, what would you find attractive? And then decide, how do we get that together so that it's compatible?
Over the years, Bow Park has been progressively given an increasing number of responsibilities. Presently, Bow Park oversees 40 miles of rail trail, parks large and small, an ice arena, an amphitheater, a community and senior center, the Morgantown History Museum and more. What are your ideas to improve funding for Bow Park's recreational opportunities?
Bow Park has always been a mainstay of Morgantown. You have several really nice parks in Morgantown, you have a lot of nice pools, you have the Wilds Hills Senior Community Center, all of which are part of the Bow Park system. I think that part of the challenge that Bow Park faces is while it's a city entity, it provides services to the entire county. So there's no restriction as to who comes in and uses the facilities that Bow Park and Morgantown provide. I think one of the things that we would need to look at for that is a cooperative effort with the county to have some revenue from the county to come in to help support those facilities. Or on the other side, have a fee structure such that the non-residents would be charged a nominal fee to use the facilities and to be equitable for the taxpayers of Morgantown. Thank you.
This is a subject for me that's a little personal. I've played hockey here for 38 years now, will continue to, as far as Mr. Spencer is concerned, at least till I'm 60. So I will continue to. I would love to see some joint participation with the county. I play hockey with the guys from Maryland, Ohio, West Virginia, Pennsylvania. They all come in once a week to come in and play a hockey game. So the more guys that you can get into the state in one manner or another, the more of an opportunity they'll become a citizen, which we have done that with quite a few guys. So I don't agree that they should have to pay more than what I should have to pay. How we're gonna fund it, there's a lot of research that needs done out there, but it needs done. Our ice rink is about to fall over. It's been great, we've made some improvements, but definitely a lot more things need done. So, thank you.
Well, I think people have already said, one of the issues is that the county does not fund Bow Park sufficiently. They contributed money last year for the concert series, but I don't know if there was anything else from the county and that needs to change. However, we can pressure the county to do that. The alternative, which I hope will happen anyway, is that we annex large areas of the county and that people will be paying the city taxes and for Bow Park, that would be my goal. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to put it on a park employee to have to ask people, do you live in the city or the county? My father used to cheat on that. We lived in Baltimore County, he played at Forest Park Golf Course in Baltimore City his whole life. It was the same zip code as the city, but we were not in the city and he always swore he was a city resident, so. I'm not proud of that, but I think it's hard to say the county people will have to pay it, the city people won't. We either have to get the county to pay it and/or annex large parts of the county.
Bow Park is definitely one of our assets that contributes to the quality of life of living in Morgantown. And its infrastructure needs sorely repaired. And maybe the 1% sales tax, part of those funds earmarked towards Bow Park. But there is an equity issue with, the Bow Park system serves the greater community of Morgantown Mon County, but it's funded primarily by us that live in the city. And so I would like to see is there a more equitable way that we could share some of that cost? Because it truly is a county asset, not just a city asset. And it's a wonderful asset.
So Bow Park is what I've been living and breathing for the past four years that I've been on the Bow Park Board. I have several colleagues and tenants here who are also on the Bow Park Board. We would like to be welcoming to all. We're willing to make appropriate asks to the county. We appreciate the county levy, which has gone to the ice arena, which we're starting this summer to make some of, put some of that money straight into the ice arena, which is really exciting. We're working really hard to stretch the dollars that we have. We've made some good repairs this spring to the marilla pool we're making. And there's a new ship that you can see that's gonna be a toddler water feature at Creps Park that you can see if you look behind the pool building at Creps. And so it's really exciting, but I think it's time to move forward and not just Band-Aid up everything. So I'm in favor of this 1% sales tax and to start working on some capital projects. Thanks.
I think the 1% sales tax is probably the path of least resistance to be able to provide more funding for Bow Park. I do, you know, I do think it's a dilemma how, it is a regional, it serves the region, but it's a city-owned system. And so frankly, I think we ought to consider looking to moving towards a regional system. I think it's hard to ask the county to co-pay when it's really our asset. And so I just wonder if there's a more equitable arrangement between all of the municipalities in the county in terms of, in terms of how we invest in this system that we have.
Again, another good point by another Ron. That's the one thing that, we used to have the Mon County Recreation System. And I think with that joint effort, instead of the city pointing fingers at the county, let's do what we've done on the MUB Board, we increased the MUB Board to have a county member on there. Let's change the Bow Park Board to the Mon County Board. And we can put more assets together, more money from both entities and actually go out for more grants and aid because we're bigger. And we can actually do more things, not only within the city, but outside the city. So I would definitely be in favor of joining the county and Morgantown back together again and make that a county authority, basically. Thank you.
I have mixed feelings about that ever since 1981, where when I was not around and the county left because they, the county and the city separated because the county did not want to contribute enough funds. I think there's, this issue has been alive and well. And it's disappointing and sad, but that doesn't mean that we can't decide to do things differently and try again. I have, we have and continue to partner with the county. The county residents, including Morgantown residents, of course, passed the ice rink levy. And that, those funds, which are around $2 million, are being used right now to renovate the ice rink. And that is in large part to, due to the county's efforts to get that passed and to make that a priority. There's no one more dedicated than a hockey player. But in addition to that, the parks that are being renovated or have been renovated in the past two years include the marilla pool, the Wilds Hill Playground, the Creps Pool, White Moore Park, Jack Roberts Park and our ball fields. We have made these changes because we have had a city administration that is absolutely committed to recreation. And not only capital improvement, but also the services that are provided to our children, which are very, very necessary for working parents. And I'd just like to take one second to say that the purpose and the value of recreation goes beyond recreation. It goes to community building and it goes to protecting our children from some of the challenges that they face when they're unsupervised, when they're engaged in activities that we all fear our children will engage in, when they're not playing, when they're not participating in organized events, when they're not being served by our community. We have to commit our investment and our passion and our time to making these opportunities available to our kids because the research shows that it's one of the best protectors against some of the terrible losses we're seeing throughout West Virginia when it comes to drug and alcohol abuse. And Morgantown is committed to that and we are still committed to it. And I know, I know our next council will be too.
Actually, you've heard some pretty good comments. But what you really haven't paid attention to, I think, is the fact that there are a lot of good things already going on. You know, there's a refurbished slide, there are improvements to both of the pools that we have made, there's additional monies that we've committed to this, from the city to Bow Park in order to accomplish these kinds of things. We are also looking at the idea of pocket parks. If you look over at Paul's Park, for example, and you look at the playgrounds within the neighborhoods itself. And also to the things that we are doing that, as Rachel said, these are important community builders. These are things that really do affect the quality of life, the sense of place, the children that you have around it, you. These are the things that we pay attention to. These, be assured though, we are paying attention to them. It's just that we don't have the monies to throw at them to make everything immediately good. But we are working on it. We're going after grants, we're considering other methods. Heard talk about the sales tax, that's a consideration too. That's not necessarily the final solution, but we are looking for solutions and we are working towards improving the product that we already have.
I hear everybody here very passionately speak to the need for recreation and for parks, for places for children, for green space, for health and for safety. And I don't disagree with any of that. But my vision is longer. You can't have that if you don't have BNO taxes. You can't have that if you don't have revenue. And when I look ahead, I think, okay, it's good to do these things that we're doing now, but what about the future? The only way we're going to go forward in the future with Morgantown and to do the things we want to do and to continue to sustain and develop our parks and our green space and our health and safety is to bring business in that we can, that can support us for the long term. Short-term solutions are quick fixes. And nothing is quick when it comes to getting business and doing business development and increasing your tax base. It's a struggle, it's a challenge, it's not an overnight fix. But if we want these things, we've got to think a little further ahead than today's budget. And that's what I focus on is the longer term and how do we get there?
As I've spoken to different groups many times, I am a very strong supporter of Bow Park and community recreation facilities. The current city council has done an amazing job in providing emergency funding in order for our pools to stay open this summer. Politically and within government, it can take years for us to take action, but children don't have years. Years can encompass their entire childhood. Bow Park needs the funding to provide valuable services that they do to our region, and that's why I strongly support the municipal sales tax with half of the 1% dedicated to Bow Park. That could provide us potentially greater than $2.5 million in extra revenue a year to provide for these children and funding opportunities. As a recent, recent new father myself, I realize that children are our future. In order for us to have a prosperous future in Morgantown, we have to invest in our children and in our public recreation spaces.
I would just like to remind the candidates real quick that I don't have a mic over here, so if you go over, I can't screen time. So please be respectful, wrap it up within several seconds. Barbara over there lifting up the mic. So the next question, let me get out of this light here. What strategies can you suggest to develop better working relationships between the city council and county commission as well as other organizations within the county?
Unfortunately, I have not had the experience to even answer that question. I've got to get on one council or another before I can make any comment on that. So, thank you.
That's a very good question. I feel like I'm always willing to work with the county, but there's a different vision that the city has than the county. The city's vision is we want to provide excellent services. That's in our strategic plan that we came up with last fall. The county, Tom Bloom won election last time, he said, my goal is to keep taxes as low as possible. And I think those goals conflict with each other. And I'm willing to work with the county, but the county has to acknowledge us and help us funding the bus system, the library, the parks, the school system, things that they don't do now. And if that means raising taxes. The citizens in the county areas that are not in the city, they have voted for levies to fund the buses and the libraries and the schools. So I think that they're willing to be taxed. And I think that we have to look at everything being in a tip district in the county and say, maybe you need to support other things. And I think an annexation would be a good solution to part of that.
My first question would be, why, why don't we have a better strategy working with the county? It seems like better communication is obvious, that we need a partnership to be effective. I serve on the Rail Trail Board and have for many, many years and have been current president. And that's a shared resource that the county and the city contribute towards. And that 48-mile linear park is a great asset for our community. So I would look towards that as a building block in meeting and working with county commission on other projects to share resources to better fund what we want to have happen.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting issue. One thing to remember is that in our area, city residents are also county residents. And so we also contribute to the county tax base. Some places, counties operate separately outside of cities. And so if you come from somewhere where cities and counties are largely separate and kind of collaborate across borders... of collaborate across borders, that's, it's different here. So when possible, I work with the county whenever I can, as often as I can, on transportation issues, on making requests to work on parks and recreation. I've gone to openings of things that were completely in the county and not in the city. I think that we do need to collaborate as much as we can, but I think we also need to have a strong city with well-funded amenities so that we can help to bring in the jobs that we're looking for and bring in the residents that we're looking for and maintain the businesses and the residents that we have now.
So one of the first things I did after I was elected in 2017 was I reached out to the three commissioners and offered to have a conversation with them. And two out of the three accepted that offer. And one of the things I've tried to do is maintain some open communication and collaboration where those can exist. I think one of the struggles is that, or I think one of the things that we needed to do is to work on building trust. And I think that we can do that through some, having some small wins together. And I mentioned that I've been involved downtown. I think the Mon County Development Authority is an incubator downtown and really appreciate their presence downtown and what they're doing. And Commissioner Bloom actually has been very much involved in a street festival that's being planned by Main Street Morgantown, the county, and certainly the city will support that for the West Virginia birthday. So I think that there are opportunities. I think that we need to have some small wins and then grow them from there.
I personally have a great relationship with all three council members, or commissioners. I've known them all, at least 20 years, each one of them. And the other thing is that I work on two different boards that are county and city. I'm on the MUB board that has county members, and I'm also on the Transit Authority that has three county people. And actually, I'm on the Transit Authority and I am, I was appointed by the county. So I'm not appointed by the city, I'm on the, on that board as a county member. So I think that, you know, if I was on council, I definitely could work with all three of those guys and we could make things happen. Thanks.
I find all three of our county commissioners to be entertaining and interesting and exceptional individuals. And I think that they're just very, they're very different people and they're unique people, and I enjoy them personally. I think what is a challenge is that we do have a different vision and we have different obligations. I will always be a resident of the county as long as I live here. Some of the county commissioners don't live in the city, and so their concerns do not really focus on some of the challenges that the residents of Morgantown face. Some of those challenges include both our high cost of living and the fact that we are very, very generous. We have, as far as I know, every time we've been asked to make a commitment to a county endeavor, we've agreed. Every time we've been called to the table, we've come. What is difficult, I think, is that sometimes we're perceived to be a financial center when we're, when the 30,000 residents who live here are actually really challenged as we try to rise to the level that we need to get to, to be an excellent city. And our parks are good examples. For example, 60% of our participants in our pools, our county residents, we want to serve them, we do serve them. And Morgantown residents go to bat for the county whenever we can. So I hope that the perception that we don't, that we have difficulties will eventually dissipate. I see us working together on so many different levels because we have to.
I think truthfully that sometimes we don't get the credit that we deserve, that we do cooperate on numbers of things. MPO is one of them. The idea of roads is another. The idea of pedestrian right-of-ways, that's another. Jenny's been working with Tom on the idea of roads and we've been working in cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce. We do reach out to these other people. The thing is that these are not necessarily recorded on. So you don't hear about them, they're not a problem, they're not the, what, soup of the day. In any case, there is plenty of places that we can improve that conversation, but don't assume that it doesn't happen. We already do, we do talk. The idea of promoting the conversation, that's important, and that's something that we will, as this council has tried to do, we'll continue to do that. Thank you.
The first thing we need to consider is that the mission of the city is a bit different than the mission of the county. And that's acceptable. But it's also true that because the city is in the county, we have areas of overlap and areas of shared interest. And anytime you're dealing with conflict, to minimize conflict, you look for those common areas so that you can work together and problem-solve together and communicate together and resolve your issues. I think sometimes the rumors are greater than the problem. I don't know what the problem is. I would have to look into that a little more if there is a problem. But most of the time, it has to do with having the time to share together, to meet together, and to identify those things you have in common. And so it's typically a matter of both sides committing to communicate and somehow working that out on a regular basis and then sharing their interests and their resources on those areas that we share. But we do have two entirely different focuses as far as, as our business.
So I've spent the majority of my professional career working as a mediator between counties, federal agencies, private industries, and sometimes tribal nations. I have experience in developing, developing these collaborations, often in very stressful situations such as federally declared disasters with FEMA, and often when trying to overcome cultural differences such as working between cities and tribal nations. The best thing I've learned during my career is that for cooperation, you have to build collaborative relationships early before a crisis happens, before there's a need, that relationship already has to be built. As I've been campaigning for city council, I've already started trying to build these relationships. I've met with nonprofits, I've met with small business owners, I've met with citizens, I've met with neighborhood associations, really anyone who will come and talk with me, I've attempted to meet with them. I feel that it's, it's through an understanding that when you're trying to develop partnerships, you have to come at it from a point of understanding all sides of it. You can't just bring the issue that you're trying to present. You really have to understand all sides in order to form a working relationship.
As has been said by several people this evening, without knowing the current group dynamics, it's difficult to address this question. I do know that, as has been stated, the city and the county have very different visions, goals, and priorities. Sometimes those do overlap, but quite often, they can be in conflict with each other. The two things that I think really need to take place in order to enhance that relationship early on is to build a consensus and to build individual relationships. Look at those areas where the priorities are consistent and move on from there to those priorities that may be a little bit more challenging.
Wow. So I know we mentioned potentially doing a three-minute break after we ask these six questions, but it was mentioned to me, I don't have a clock on me, that we're running kind of short on time, so if it's okay with candidates, we might have been carried on with the audience-written questions? Anyone opposed to that? Okay. Let me just, these note cards. Some of you must be doctors. I got this one. What is your position on annexation? Why? How can you make council more responsive to residents? So it's, it's still one minute for the people who have opposing candidates and for those who have no opposition, still 30 seconds.
I'm very much in favor of annexation. The city is way too small. It needs to be larger. We've been presented with a draft of a plan for annexation in Suncrest where I live, it goes up to West Brom, which is great. I would annex up to the Pennsylvania border if I could, on the east side of the river. I think we need to put these people in the city. The city is also zoned for, largely for single-family housing, Suncrest, South Park. But the townhouses and apartments that are more affordable are not now on the city limits. And I think that would provide some of the affordable housing we need by putting those people in the city and provide them with services like recycling, maybe we could build some sidewalks, neighborhood parks. We could give something back to them and we would have these areas that are, where people are not homeowners but are renters in the city. I think that would be a great thing.
I'm also in favor of annexation. I think the city of Morgantown, we're a much bigger footprint than what, than what we are. And I think that would be a more fair way to represent what the city of Morgantown is. And right now, we, we're providing support services to the county through the city. And the crazy way our boundary of the city is drawn, there are narrow stretches, then it winds out again. And so if you're a firefighter, a policeman, you're taking care of issues regardless of city-county boundaries as you deal with what needs to be dealt with. So this would be a more fair way to share costs and provide a broader service base. So, but, but it needs to be done smartly, just not to be done, but smart annexation. And it's also a way to have proper planned growth so that we do incorporate green space as part of that plan, as well as protect our resources. Thanks.
So sometimes people are confused because they would like to vote in the city that it says on the envelope when they get their mail. So if their mail says Morgantown, they'd like to vote in Morgantown. And so I think it would be smart if our boundaries matched the reality of the developed area. There is a health to having cities have the ability to grow. I think that there is a health in having these kinds of discussions, and I think there's a health in working together to make sure that our boundaries do reflect the developed area that surrounds our community. And there's also some fairness and equity issues and some safety issues that will be accomplished when we annex. Thanks.
I am not in favor of annexation as a matter of economic development. I think that we have opportunities within city limits to do more with what we have than what we're doing. But I am interested in annexation. I think, but I think that it has to be, the process has to be transparent and collaborative. I am against, and I've expressed this to the city manager, I'm against coming up with a plan and springing the plan on the public. I will oppose annexation if that's how we do it. However, if we engage in conversations around the issue and if we go through a public process that's transparent and open, then I think I'd be much more likely to support annexation at that point.
I would be supportive of annexation if we deal with those areas and talk to them and then see if they want to come in. We want those people to be encouraged to come and be part of Morgantown. I'd like to see us do something a little different. Out in Saberton, if you look at that area, that's one of the only places that we attach to the interstate. And that, if you look at the other models that are around us, Westover and Granville are making a ton of money. And why? Because they're attached to the interstate. Our growth area really could be Saberton. And if we can actually annex in the undeveloped areas, it's going to be a lot easier than trying to annex in those areas that have already developed, and it's going to be a little more difficult. We're going to end up in probably court. And we don't want to do that. So why don't we try and look at that vision? If you look, if you remember 1954, for those people that weren't here, MUB actually bought a huge tract of land. And right now, MUB is building a dam that's going to, that's going to serve us 33, 33 days of fresh water. And that vision, back then, we bought undeveloped land. And it's the same thing here. We've got to look 10 years down the road, not just quick fixes. Thanks.
I think vision is important. I think planning for the future is important. I think trying to understand the reality of where we are today is critical. I am also in favor of asking folks if they want to join the city, but my concern is that the development that exists now, that has built up over the past 30 years, is currently affecting our residents. It affects us by introducing new residents who need our Boat Park services, folks who need our, our street services, folks who are employed by businesses in our area that need to commute and use our streets. And one of the biggest concerns for me is that many of the developments that are just over the border are often multifamily, multi-person developments that really should have access to a municipal professional fire service and to a professional police service. We have pockets in our community that are almost completely, almost completely encircled by the city, and those pockets of development that are often dense affect our city residents because they don't have access to the services we need. So I'm interested in annexation. And just so everybody knows, this is just raw data. This is not a plan. A plan has not been created or made, and we're going to be moving into that process very soon.
Kind of forget what the question is. I guess we're talking about annexation and what's your position? I'm in favor of it. I think it's just a matter of growing up. You know, it's just the logical progression that the city, as it matures, takes. There are people who have benefited from the idea of stepping over the other side, but nurturing from the various facilities and activities that we provide. They bring us more traffic, they bring us the idea of having to be more concerned with the idea of safety, and they develop in a manner that is not particularly up to what we would like to have as a standard within the city itself. I think it's about time that people just shared. It's a matter of equity, it's a matter of growth, it's a matter of just maturity. So I'm in favor of it.
There are three ways that annexation can take place. One is that a group of people come forward and ask the city to be annexed. Another is that the city does a minor boundary adjustment and takes a group of people or an area in. The third is that those people get to vote, and it's their choice. And I believe that as representatives of the citizens who pay our taxes, we should be able to give them a choice. But annexation is a value-added proposition. It means that if I'm going to vote for it, I get something for it. There is a value in being annexed into the city. And I think that requires a lot of thinking, a lot of discussion, a lot of explanation, a lot of understanding, and it can't be done overnight. So if we're going to do annexation, which I'm not opposed to, if it's done correctly, then we need to think ahead, and we should have been doing a lot of planning before we ever got to the point of saying we'd like to do annexation. And planning does what Ron said. When you know what you want to do with the properties around the area, then you can get in front of annexation and get involved in the infrastructure and make it attractive for the residents and the businesses to be annexed.
I'm in favor of annexation because I see a public safety issue in the way our current wards are drawn. When you look at the way our wards are drawn, a lot of the high-population, high-density areas are actually outside of the city, such as Marjorie Gardens. If there was an emergency or fire at Marjorie Gardens, it would be serviced by the Brookhaven Fire Department instead of the city department. That's about a mile and a half, mile and a half down the road from there. When you have large populations and heavy densities of people, you need professional fire and police services. Also, if these residents that lived in these apartment communities had professional fire and police services, their rental tax and if they own their home, their property tax should also be, or not taxes, I'm sorry, their insurance could also be lower and they would benefit from the, the city services.
I think annexation is a valid means of growth for the city. Currently, Morgantown has about 30,000 residents, which as a percentage of the county population is less than it was 15 years ago. My concern with annexation is that it's done in a responsible, targeted way. I feel that presenting a plan to the county commission that annexes huge masses of land in one request is doomed for failure.
that annexes huge masses of land in one request is doomed for failure. I also believe that when you're looking at annexation, you need to be sure that there's a value provided for both sides. It needs to be a win-win situation. So bringing someone into the city for just the residents' benefit and not providing any additional resources for the city could be detrimental.
I can truly say I like the idea. The three words that are three things that I could say that would scare a lot of the citizens, because they get to read the Dominion Post every day, just like the people in the city do. We've had a conversation about a one percent tax. We've had a conversation of the user fee. We've had a conversation of the B and O tax. Every conversation that we're having up here and every question that's been asked, now you're not just including people in the city, you're including people in the county. Those citizens have a right to determine whether they want to partake in that or not. I don't think it's the city's job or the county's job to say you are going to, whether you like it or not. So I think everything needs to get straightened up within the city where more positive things are brought out in the Dominion Post, in the public, and maybe they would want to join the city. So, thank you.
Do you think WVU pays their fair share? If not, how can you make them do it?
It's, yeah, that's a loaded one. It's a challenge when WVU is able to avoid paying taxes and takes occupancy in the city limits, and then our footprint stays the same and WVU's grows. I think we should have a better town-gown relationship where we discuss resource allotment towards shared services, such as the rail trails, an example. WVU benefits greatly by us having the rail trail, but does not contribute directly to the rail trail. And so we would we being the board of directors of the rail trail would like to have a discussion with WVU about that as one example, because that's an amenity that attracts faculty, staff, students to come to WVU. So I think that that's sort of a partnership where it's not forced but encouraged would be my approach with WVU to try to help better share costs, different resources that we feel are important.
So over the years, we've worked on these issues. For instance, the fire fee, WVU pays completely their share of the fire fee. The same with nonprofits locally. So the reason that the fire fee, I think, is a strong success is that we need more support for our firefighters and for our equipment. And we're going to get really short on time quickly here. Anyway, we need we need to make sure that other other items kind of reflect that same attitude. I agree about working on the rail trail, and I've started I've started modest efforts to work on that. I know that we've met with at least one county commissioner to talk about sharing some of the load for, for instance, when there are a lot of slips on the rail trail in a given year, and there's there's a lot of extra cost, how we can make sure that that how we can make sure that that's paid for. I know that one really nice example is that we've been working with a committee of the Division of Highways, the city, the county, and WVU, and we're sharing the cost of some pedestrian improvements on three intersections within the city limits. And then we're also working on some state intersections with shared costs between the three entities. Thanks.
Yeah, that's a tough question. I think it is it is a challenge when WVU occupies a third of the land area of the city. And their infrastructure is really supported by by the city. Their infrastructure is infrastructure that we provide and that we share. My understanding is that the city understands the WVU understands that what's good for the city is should be good for WVU, and that especially in the area of recruiting employees on their professional campuses, et cetera. My understanding is that the the university is willing to collaborate on projects if if those projects are brought to them. But I don't know in terms of, you know, across the board, I don't know how we I don't know how we get them to communicate more openly with us and vice versa.
I guess the real issue for me over the years is, are we WVU, and it happens to be in Morgantown, are we Morgantown, home of where WVU is? And we have to decide how we're going to have strategies to be one or the other. I like the one that says we're Morgantown, the home of WVU. They do something called a pilot project as payment in lieu of taxes. Like Jenny said, they pay the fire fee right now. They also do have their employees pay the user fee at this time. My concern is that we've got to continue to have a good relationship with them because on those on those fronts, payment in lieu of taxes is not contractual, and nor is the user fee. They volunteered to do that at this point. But if you push too hard, that can also be pulled. So it's one of those interesting relationships, and we've got to make sure that we maintain a very good relationship with them so that they can be involved with projects as we move forward in the future. Thanks.
I think it's I think relationships are important, of course, and I agree with Ron to a great extent. It's similar to our relationship to the county where we have different visions and different goals. But I do want to acknowledge that there is a lot of cooperation happening now. And I'd particularly like to notice that we have to to let you all know that we have a lot of WVU employee contributions on our boards and commissions. And they also make up a large part of our of our population. I want to acknowledge that we are the city of Morgantown and our residents are are pulling our weight. We are pulling our fair share. We are doing our best to make WVU a great place to work, a great place to come to, and to make our city a wonderful place, to have a Big Twelve university. The question is, can we get enough buy-in to make that possible? I don't know of another Big Twelve university where there's no zoning in the county, for example, or very little zoning. I don't know of another Big Twelve university that sits in a county where there's not a sales tax. I don't know how we resolve these problems, but we need to because we can. There's there's no one works harder than people in West Virginia. No one's more generous than the people of the city of Morgantown.
Well, you heard it mentioned that we have looked at WVU and we have talked with them about payment in lieu of taxes or pilot programs. We do, they do contribute to the fire fee. They also contribute to B and O and the construction B and O that we get from them when they're building. And their businesses, the businesses that they have at the mountain and what have you, they pay B and O tax, too. The university has been a very cooperative and and I think under this administration, much, much friendlier to the city, much more participatory with the city. But they do it on a project basis, not dissimilar to the way some of the things are handled at the county level. They're willing to participate in a particular project as opposed to give you the money to go out and do what you would like to do. They would like to be a partner. Well, we're looking forward to increasing that partnership. We're working with them now on the Blue Zone. Looking forward to that. They do offer a significant benefit to the city in terms of personnel and what they bring. I think that it's worth considering. And although I'd love to have more money, we're quite happy to have them here.
I think this is a question a lot of people ask and have for over the years. And the question is, do you think they pay their fair share? Well, how do you define fair? How do they define fair? I do know that we do have the payment in lieu of taxes for certain items, and we do work on projects. But I think more importantly, to have some sharing in the vision planning process, what we want downtown to be, how we want to relate to the students, what services, what kind of amenities we offer them, because we are here for them as well as for our citizens. Working on those kinds of things takes a little longer to put that together. The university offers us tremendous amount of resources in terms of knowledge and people who have expertise that we can use. Because as a council, we're a disparate group of people, essentially. We're all very different. We come from different backgrounds, and we turn over every two years possibly. So the university has some consistency, some talent, and I think we need to find a way to tap into this on a much more a longer-term kind of relationship so that we can work on longer-term projects together.
As I mentioned earlier, I feel WVU should take more responsibility for the housing of their students. I feel strongly about this because this is particularly an issue for Wilds Hills and the and the Third Ward, as I see a potential threat of multifamily housing coming up into our neighborhood from the current student housing areas. However, I have seen examples of WVU and the city and other organizations coming together in roundtable discussions, such as the pedestrian safety initiative, which brought WVU, the city, and the Division of Highways together to collaboratively problem solve. I'm strongly in favor of using methods such as this, where you bring all interested stakeholders to the table, and everyone discusses together and tries to find a way to solve our problems using the strengths of WVU and the strengths of the city to come up with solutions that are beneficial to all involved.
Does WVU pay their fair share? I would say if you if you look at the big picture and not just looking at dollars, I think they provide some very valuable assets to the city. They provide entertainment. They provide just opportunities for the for the residents as well as the students. In looking at strictly dollar amounts, the city faces really a challenge because what they can do with WVU is strictly voluntary. As a state institution, the city can't go out and say, we're going to tax you for this, we're going to tax you for that. So ultimately, the importance is going to be in building the relationships with the administration of WVU and ensuring those relationships are fostered and move forward in order to have a cooperative agreement and be able to work together in a productive way.
Got to love WVU Mountaineers, without a doubt. Do I feel they pay their fair share? No, I do not. Does some negotiating need to be done? Absolutely. For some reason, the perception of people in town is that the city council is scared half to death of WVU. So I think if collaborations are going on, those things do need to be made public. It'd be great for the public to know. And maybe WVU will actually get some credit for that as well. Maybe negotiations can go a little easier if everyone is on the same page.
I'm not sure this would be a livable city without WVU. And we've benefited a lot on the city council. A graduate student came up with a plan for the Green Team on how to reduce our electricity costs. And this was a woman who was an engineering student and came up with this whole elaborate plan as a graduate thesis, which was great. On the other hand, the state Supreme Court kind of messed us up because there were buildings where we were collecting taxes from these buildings, and we had to pay back, what, half a million dollars? Because the state Supreme Court said this was the university's property and not private business, which gives the the businesses in the university buildings an unfair advantage over private businesses in the city, which is not right. And also, for instance, on Van Voris, they bought an office building, a motel and a restaurant, and took those off the tax rolls. And I think that we should have it, we should negotiate with them that if something is still being used as a private business, even if the university owns it, they should pay taxes on it. I don't know how we can negotiate that. I'm not afraid of them. I'm not afraid of anything at this point.
Well, I know there are multiple more questions that are handed. We're unfortunately short on time, so we're going to have to wrap it up and do our one-minute final statements from the candidates. I will start on this end. So if you wanted to begin.
I won't take all of my money. Just remember that early voting starts on the seventeenth. It goes to the twenty-seventh. I, you know, I want to serve Serbia if you want me to, and I'm more willing to give the time and effort to it. So, thank you. And then, of course, election day is the thirtieth. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. I appreciate you all coming here, and thank you very much for inviting us all here. It's very hard to listen to fourteen or so one-minute to thirty-second answers for hours. I haven't really enjoyed working on city council for the past two years. It's been a joy to to work with such a diverse group of people. And I would just like to relay one very important thing that I've learned, which is that when you agree to serve the city, whether it's for sixteen years, or two years, or four years, or six years, and you make the commitment to stand up here and to run for public office, that you're making a very deep commitment of your your person and yourself. Every single person up here is brave. They're taking their time and their energy. And I hope that we can remember that whoever is elected to be kind and respectful as as their two years unfold, however that happens. I would ask for your vote. I have a lot more work to do, particularly on Bow Park and on housing. And I I just look forward to the chance to serving in those ways. Thank you all very much.
We all have our passions here. I want to say that working with this particular council, I think we've done remarkable things. We've made remarkable progress. I'm very proud of them. I'm very proud of the work that we've done. I'm very happy with our administration. I think our administration has taken all of our ideas that we've thrown at them and put it into a workable format, and we've made significant progress. I am so excited about the possibilities that we face here in Morgantown and the things that can happen that I want to participate. And I want to take what I began to understand over these past terms and apply those in a manner that will move us forward. And that's why I'm running. I want to support this administration. I want to continue with this council. I want to make sure that we move Morgantown forward. Thank you.
What I'd like to bring to council is a more strategic approach to where Morgantown needs to go and how it needs to relate to the communities around it, to the cities around it, to the county, and to the West Virginia University. It requires a lot more planning, a lot more thinking, a lot more exploring, a lot more research, and then working very closely with those around us to help achieve that. That's been one of my strengths as a leader. I served on the school board for eighteen years. I was president for the last six. I think we did a very wonderful job of looking forward, of trying to predict what we needed to do, work with the growth in the area, develop the schools that we needed to meet those needs. And in fact, we've planned by purchasing additional property to eventually build another high school. So we're looking forward as long as we grow, and we can do that at the city level, too.
When I started looking at making a career change, I had a number of different job opportunities: San Francisco, Florida, Texas, and West Virginia. And when I tell people this, they always say, why on earth did you pick West Virginia? I fell in love with West Virginia. The people here have such a passion for their history. They have such a tie to their land that you don't see anywhere else. I'm a West Virginian by choice because of that pride, because of that passion. I've seen how being a city councillor is a hard job. I've seen the comments they get. I've seen how much they struggle. But my passion and my desire to want to help this city and want to be your elected representative overwhelms anything I anything I think that that may bring. That's why I'm asking for your vote. I fell in love with West Virginia, and I'm excited to help it go to a prosperous future.
As a long-term resident of Morgantown of over twenty-eight years, I have been involved in the community at various levels, participated with a lot of social service agencies, and have had the opportunity to watch Morgantown go through ups and downs. It is my hope that on April thirtieth, you'll write me in for Third Ward so that we can continue to move Morgantown continue to move Morgantown forward in the direction it needs to go, so it can be a livable, viable city with viable neighborhoods and equal opportunity for those that are less fortunate, and that everyone would have the ability to earn a living wage and sustain themselves in a, in a happy and healthy way.
Well, I'm in Morgantown by choice, not because I have to be. What I do, I can do anywhere in the country, or for that matter, anywhere in the world. I've seen the ups and downs of Morgantown, too. I feel it every single day being a business owner, and I'm not liking the feeling that I have. I don't like what I see. I don't like the fact that people do not have the money in their pocket that they used to. And that, it has to be solved. Our citizens need to be first, period, every single day. And I, I don't, I don't feel that way. I don't feel that that's what's happening. And I hear a lot of suggestions and a lot of ideas. I'd really like to hear from the public, though, and hear what they have to say, and take it to heart and do something positive for the community.
Being on the city council's been really interesting and kind of challenging, but I've been really happy about it. I have a slightly different way of looking at it. I want to see the attitude of the city and the way we present ourselves. I want to be the, the open, loving, caring city in West Virginia, because I don't see that in a lot of West Virginia, but I do see that here, and that's what I want to continue. We have, we, we've had two strategic planning sessions where we came up with ideas for what we wanted in the city, those of us on the council. We presented them to the city manager. He presents them to the planning director, the finance director, the, everybody else, and they make it happen. And that's how I see it. We come up with the ideas. This is what we want, and I want an open and caring city. I want a city with parks and green space where it's safe to bicycle on the streets. And I think we're getting to that. We are getting to that, and I want to continue to work for that and to continue with our vision of a shining city on the hill.
I grew up in Morgantown in the Woodburn area and went to WVU, and like many people, needed to move away to start my career, and did that. And in 95, my wife and I made a conscious choice to come back to my hometown because I wanted to raise our kids in Morgantown so that they could call Morgantown home. And I've served on many boards, commissions, and associations over the years, and I see this as an opportunity to offer to serve on a larger scale, and would look forward to being on city council. And I would like to, if I do serve, take the perspective of somebody who's been a wellness professional for many years in looking at decisions and issues, in asking, how does it improve safety? Does it improve the health of our community and personal well-being? And I would look at that lens on the issues before us.
Hi, I'm Jenny Saleen. I used to be the new fresh ideas on city council. Some of you may have heard me say this before. Now I have that institutional knowledge and the ability to get things done. So I like to kind of work hard to not tell people to not try something again. I try to make sure that we are trying initiatives a second time or a third time if need be. I like to enable my fellow councillors, whoever they may be, during this next session. I really have appreciated this particular council's willingness to undergo some strategic planning. We've done it in the past, at least on one or two other occasions, but this council held in there for two separate sessions, one to get started and then another to check where we were and how we could best move forward from where we are now. And I just really appreciate the ability to, to move this city forward. Just for your information, so that if you're, if you're wanting to work on a certain issue and you're looking for which councillor might be working on that issue, I've been working hard on Bow Park, as I mentioned before, along with Rachel Betty, and I've been working a lot on transportation, roads, and pedestrian issues. So I'm on three different groups that work on pedestrian safety. I'm the chair of the MMPO, which works on regional transportation planning, and so as we all move forward, please feel to contact any of us with your issues and concerns.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to participate tonight, even if I am sort of behind the podium, but I'm tall, I can see over it. My, my main motivation for running two years ago was that, as I looked around Morgantown and thought about the quality of life that we have here, I see a tremendous amount of potential. I see tremendous potential in our downtown, in our neighborhoods. We have a good school system, which of, of course, is a county, countywide system. But I think that there are some things that, that we can certainly improve, and I think a lot of those have to do with the physical environment that we have. And as an architect who has practiced for many years and also taught, I thought that my expertise in terms of design and urban planning, master planning, is something that would benefit our city, and I've worked hard to do that primarily in our downtown and also for our neighborhoods. A lot of being on council is thinking about finances, thinking about paving, thinking about trash, hearing a lot about trash. And, and really, I think the bottom line is, you know, I'm your advocate to our city government and your representative, and certainly we have to take care of those basic services. But I think that, that we should be aspirational, we should want more, and we should work towards those long-term goals and dreams that we have as a community. Thank you.
I would just like to thank everyone for coming. I know it was kind of crazy with all those power outages earlier, but I appreciate you coming in here. Just a reminder that early voting begins on April 17th and lasts till April 27th, and Election Day for the city council election is on April 30th. Once again, thank you for coming in, and thank you to Mountaineers for Progress and the League of Woman Voters for hosting this. Thank you.